I'm here, Madam Mayor, just enjoying all of your conversations and hoping that Joe doesn't change his wardrobe in front of us all.
All right, so with that, we'll call this tour. It's good to see everyone again. We'll start today, or tonight, I should say, with a moment of silence like we always do, and then Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'll turn to our clerk for roll call. So if you'll join for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Now, will be roll call?
Roll call, I'm closing.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Sassi.
Here.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, thank you, City Clerk. All right, next, we'll open it up for public comments. Before that, I'll introduce Ms. Lilly Beth, who is available tonight to help with translation. But let me just share a few things about our agenda tonight and opportunities for public comment. Commissioners, we have three scheduled public hearings. We did have four, but the second one on the agenda was canceled. So we do have three scheduled public hearings. One of them is for the necessity of a one-year special assessment for enhanced services for the Downtown Improvement District. We have one for a public hearing to establish 900 West Leonard as a neighborhood enterprise zone, and then our third one is a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2022 service provision fees. So I'll open those up later in the meeting. So if you want to speak on any of those items, I'm going to ask you to just stay put until we open those up. The first opportunity for public comment is public comment very specific to items that we're voting on tonight. So we'll ask you to share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And then for the first public comment period, we ask that you specifically say what agenda item that you're referring to. And then the last opportunity for public comment is at the end of our meeting. So if you want to give public comment, you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one. For the first public comment period on agenda items, you hit number one. For the one on the one-year special assessment, you would hit number two. For the public hearing for 900 West Leonard is three. The public hearing related to fees is four, and then the final public hearing would be five. So I'll introduce Ms. Lilly Beth, and then we'll open up the first opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. Good evening. If you need interpretation services to address the City Commission, I will be able to assist. Please dial 456-3000 or 311 and choose the option you'd wish to speak on tonight. Buenas noches. Si necesitas servicios de interpretación para dirigirse a la Comisión de la Ciudad, estaré disponible para ayudarle. Marque el 4, 5, 6, 3,000 o el 311 y elija la opción que desea comentar esta noche. Gracias.
Thank you, Lilly Beth. So now we'll open up the first opportunity for public comment. And again, this is public comment on an agenda items. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, the specific item you're speaking to, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. City Clerk, is it Daniel in the queue tonight?
Nope, he's enjoying the conference and networking. So Mr. Starr is with us this evening.
Okay, so Mr. Starr, do we have anyone in the queue?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, we do. Here comes your first caller.
Great, thanks.
Hello?
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you'll be speaking on. You have three minutes, and your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Scott Atchison. I live in the Third Ward of Grand Rapids. I'm here to speak in Committee of the Whole Number Three, the Downtown Development Authority Budget. Now, let me say, when I did see the rendering on MLive of the improvements going on the Rosa Parks Circle, I became so disappointed with the elected members of the City Commission, some of the appointed members, mainly the Parks Director and the City Manager. I'm not worried about the comptroller, accessor, clerk. And I'm also disappointed in the Downtown Development Authority's leadership and board. I cannot believe that the City Commission and the Downtown Development Authority do not think we need an information system downtown, an information center downtown. Now, it's just mind-boggling that we don't think we need an information. And now, we're spending $2.8 million on improvements to Rosa Parks Circle, and nobody is presenting that we need an information center at the main downtown intersection at Rosa Parks Circle. I'm feeling people are out of touch, they're living in a bubble. And I'm just saying about the Downtown Development Authority budget. They have these GR Forward groups, Group One, Group Two, Group Three, Group Four, Group Five. And if you look in the budget, they want to spend $12,860,000 in one year on pet projects. $12,860,000 on pet projects with no money allocated for an information center for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to run. You know, I'm saying, Group One, $4,595,000. Group Two, $1,665,000. Group Three, $2,270,000. Group Four, $535,000. Group Five, $3,795,000, for a total of $12,860,000. And I can't believe, I don't want to use the word ignorance, but it's a combination. But I can't believe you don't think we need an information center or an information system for downtown. It's mind-boggling. Now, the DDA is going to tell you, they're going to come back to you and say, we want a million dollars so we can buy wavefinding signs. One side, they're going to say, we don't need an information center because everybody has a cell phone. Then on the other side, why do they want to spend a million dollars on wavefinding signs when everybody has a cell phone? I'm just so disappointed that the elected members and some of the appointed members in the DDA for not having the wisdom. You know, I'm saying, get out of the bubble. Get your head out of the bubble and see we need an information center downtown, immediate and future benefits. What's great is, I get to come back and talk to you at your public hearing at the Downtown Improvement Special Assessment, too. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live and the agenda item you'll be speaking on. You have three minutes, and your time starts now.
A very pleasant good evening, everyone. Watchdog Miller, reporting lead poisoning, 7:5. Fine, as Blair Bradford Square support at least an initial inspection for all buildings of a certain age group, but only every five years thereafter. And more critical to our health is that we get non-smoking in for all these senior units such as Marsh Ridge, Grandview, of Arms. Next, I do support on 953 Lion Square. Why don't my buses go there? You want to spend $18 million? Of course, some of it is legitimate, although I'm not unhappy with our existing rating there. Your priority should be, and commissioners should be asking, why does this get on your agenda? And getting our Catholic and Black bus routes back, some 15 of them now, why aren't they going to Lion Square? The six comes down from EGR in Calhoun, but Catholic and Black bus routes still do not. Next, and D, police funding, I think you should, I tend to support dropping GBSU and all its training programs. If police are behaving badly against segments of the community, then let's start with GBSU. Cut their funding first. Next, 9B1, this is the city's only bird sanctuary. Our latest count is, there are two white swan there. Okay, we're talking Stone Brook. I'm suspicious of something called the preserve, okay? They've monkeyed around there and got some pretty back room deals in the past. And anyway, the bird sanctuary counts two white swan in the pond, some 63 Canadian geese, down about seven red-beaked turkeys, and 23, as in 21, 22, 23 deer. So we need a public hearing on this matter rather than just rubber-stamping it through with predatory procedures. Who should be informed about fire senior competence around there, including pilgrim elders, top of the path through? There are three hearing properties there, just to the east of Hartwell's old place. Next, you have Cambridge and Plymouth Arms and Veridian now. All these people should have an opportunity with public hearing. So I can't take, so I leave Bradford Square, I can't take, I have no idea what's going on. Next.
Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you for calling. Mayor, there are no more calls in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. We'll go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll take us to our minutes to be approved. We have minutes from our regular session on April 27th and then our special session on May 4th. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? All right, I'll turn to our City Clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Next, that will take us to petitions and communications.
First one is a communication received from Charlie Blush regarding neighborhood noise pollution and park installation.
That's received and filed.
Communication from Michael La Monaco regarding their resignation from West Side Corridor Improvement Authority.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Carl Kelly regarding their resignation from the Monroe North Tax Increment Finance Authority.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Dell Buxton expressing opposition to a special assessment.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from the Grand Rapids Area Tenant Union expressing support for lead poisoning prevention rental inspection ordinance.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Wendy Randall, Director of Kent County Essential Needs Task Force with American Rescue Plan Priorities.
That is received and filed.
213 communications received urging the City Commission to vote no on the adoption of the budget.
That is received and filed.
Two communications received urging the Commission to vote yes on the adoption of the budget.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Amy Carpenter expressing disappointment with the dismissal of participatory budgeting and urging the Commission to vote no on the proposed budget.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Sky Atchison expressing his disappointment of Grand Rapids' elected and appointed officials in Downtown Development Authority.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Watchdog Miller regarding an intent to litigate.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Emily Oxford urging the City Commission to decrease the GRPD budget.
And that is also received and filed. Next, that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is comptrollers report for the period of April 14, 2021 through April 27, 2021, in the amount of $27,856,205.97.
That is received and filed.
And tractors report for the period of April 13, 2021 through April 26, 2021.
And that is also received and filed. All right, that will now take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, our items that we talked about earlier today at one of our standing committee meetings, and they were voted on unanimously. So tonight, with one voice vote, we will adopt those items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, seen none. City Clerk?
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Next, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
Yeah, our ordinance is an ordinance rezoning 1214 Edith Avenue Northeast to the MCN-C, which is mid-twentieth century neighborhood commercial zone district.
Support.
Support. All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Repart, you want to tell us about this?
I do, but I got to pull it up. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. The virtual meetings.
So this is a reclassification on the northeast side of a parcel of land, and it's currently zoned, a mid-twentieth century neighborhood low-descent residential, and the proposed is mid-twentieth century commercial zone district. The Planning Commission reviewed this on April 8th. They had a public hearing. NICA, the Neighborhood Association on the northeast side, submitted a letter of support. They did express some concerns about a site plan, but that'll be a separate consideration. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to support it and to make this change in zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments about this? This is in the second ward. All right. Okay, we'll turn to our City Clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our scheduled public hearings tonight, and we have three before us. The very first one is a public hearing on the necessity of a one-year special assessment for enhanced services in the Downtown Improvement District. So I will, I believe, Mr. Kelly, there you are. Mr. Kelly is here with us to give us an overview of this. I'll open it up for any of you who may have questions for Mr. Kelly, and then we'll turn to those who are in the queue. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you, Commissioners. I did have some slides. Thank you, Mr. Cantfield. Always right on time. Yeah, so this evening, just wanted to give you a quick reminder of the Downtown Improvement District and its role in downtown. So the DAID was established back in 2000, was funded through Schedule Assessments on Real Property. It is currently, has a 15-member board and has been administered by DJRI since 2013. The current one-year authorization expires this year on June 30th, and so that's why we are before you. And having this public hearing and ultimately going to be requesting your approval for a one-year extension. Next slide, please. As you all know, there's been a significant amount of development, not only in the past decade, but in particular in the past five years. We've seen a number of new projects come online, as well as a number of new infrastructure investments that have occurred. And so the DAID is really essential in making sure that those infrastructure investments are taken care of long-term and are going to remain in the community as assets for years to come. Next slide. And the primary function at the moment for the DAID, and in particular, the general assessment, is to help fund our ambassador program. So the ambassadors, as we've talked about before, are crucial in providing those daily maintenance of sidewalk cleaning, flower planting, beautification, snowmelt operation and maintenance, as well as just general, you know, eyes and ears on the streets. And so they've been crucial since the program was established. And I think, as we go to the next slide, I just wanted to highlight again the important role that they've played in this challenging year through the pandemic. And they have helped not only in increased maintenance and sanitizing of the infrastructure, but also in helping to roll out a lot of the economic development work that we did over the past year, particularly with events like World of Winter, social zones, and also in being a liaison with the hot team. So the DAID helps to pay the bulk of the ambassador program, and that's why our board, as well as our reauthorization steering committee, are requesting that the DAID be extended for an additional year. Next slide, please. So working with our committee as well as our board, we did look at a number of scenarios and talked through some possibilities of alterations. That included analyzing the opportunity to include residential properties into the assessment this year. I think, as many of you know, that was a change in state law. I think, given the timing, there was a general, and I should say consensus and agreement around, I'm holding off on that change. And so the only change that is being recommended, and if we go to the next slide, that is highlighted, is the combination of our three snowmelt districts. So currently, there's snowmelt districts for Louis Campbell, Monroe Center, as well as Monument Park. And in this plan, and in the budget that we would recommend, those would be combined into one district, which we think will help provide a more streamlined budget and overall operational efficiency. So just to underline again, no other changes are being proposed. Next slide, please. So again, we are here tonight with a public hearing. The notices were mailed out back on April 29th, and we would seek your approval at a meeting to be set, hopefully sometime in June, and then that would set off the timeline that you see here. We do anticipate and expect that bills would go out as last year on October 1st. So we have provided a little bit of extension on that. Traditionally, they've gone out in August, so October 1 billing is the plan. And then lastly, just acknowledgement again of our volunteer board that helps to advise us on the DAID. And with that, I would be happy to, I'll pause there. I know we'll have to take some public comment, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Commissioners, any questions before I turn to those in the queue? All right, Mr. Starr, do we have anyone who wishes to be heard?
Yes, we do. Here comes your first call.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Thank you. My name is Scott Atchison. Commissioners, I would like you to ask Tim Kelly how much the total amount is for this Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment. How much is going to the ambassadors? And ask him about these downtown ambassadors, how they're paid. You know, is this block by block being billed a certain amount, and the ambassadors make a certain amount? But you're calling it enhanced services. And I cannot believe when these ambassador program first entered downtown Grand Rapids, Tom said, we don't need an information center downtown. We've got downtown ambassadors who wander around and answer all your questions, which I find, you know, funny, that Sunday I was downtown for a couple hours riding my scooter. I want an ambassador, but I saw dozens and dozens of people at Pearl and Monroe looking for information. Enhanced services? Well, I'm still saying, I'm still disappointed with the city appointed and the DDA staff and board that you guys don't have the wisdom to see you need an information center at your main downtown intersection. The Downtown Improvement District and the DDA should fund the construction of the facility, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau should run it. If the Convention and Visitors Bureau doesn't want to run it, I'll run it. But to think, we have all these downtown ambassadors, dozens of people at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and at least 14 people at the Downtown Development Authority offices, but no information center. Basically, we think we have too many chiefs and not enough Indians. But I'm not saying, you guys are going to vote for this. I mean, nobody can change your mind. You guys are already in lockstep and group thing. So I'm still disappointed in you that you don't have the wisdom, you're living in a bubble, and you need to think like a visitor to downtown Grand Rapids. You guys know where everything is because you live here, but the visitors do not, and I have so many comments I'm going to share with you in the future to try to change your mind, to try to get you to take your head out of your bubbles and see that an information center would have immediate and future benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, starts now.
Good evening. I want to talk about, puzzled why this gets on the agenda. Of course, you have to review it, but you know, our city buses still don't go there. They're still kicked out. There are a bunch of inane activities where you are butting childish school programs and childish bike programs, where senior citizens and odd-gympy people can't use them practically if we have packages, and you're charging money for them. And that's illegal and violates state law. I would say, he was the only one in the sixth city in Batoka who would charge for, like, free dash buses if you want, but you can't charge money for the inane childish, the offensive scooter and bike programs. Also, we seem to be sandwiched by disappearing bus shelters. There's right next to Van Andel Arena, next to the Jay Van Andel statue, there was an $11,000 rapid bus shelter there on Ottawa at the corner of Fulton, just on the South Side Street. Destroyed. They moved a block five away from our typical activity. They moved a block five away from our typical activities, for example, copying to block X door, have to run to catch a bus, but I know that I'm out another half hour to the next bound bus on Fulton. Now, here is really a new wrinkle. The bus shelters are all painted brown. Now, why would they do that? And they have holes in them. So they really don't shelter much, but to you, it might look like they're sheltering. But they're all painted brown, and they have holes in them. So people of certain color, fashionable colors, brown, black cannot be seen. And you'll see these new shelters now on Fulton, on the east side of the arena, and it's extremely offensive, and let them get away with this. So again, another year to be rated bus, because we see bus people don't count Catholics, senior citizens, still six black bus routes, and you know, some of you know the 19 was actually viciously destroyed. Many thanks to what the reporter.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no more calls in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Sartre. I'll go ahead.
Mayor, before you go on, the next time, I don't know what the hell the black bus route is. Maybe someone else on this call does, but I've been trying to understand that. So I would appreciate, unless there's some explanation for it, that we stop allowing the caller to say that.
All right. I will ask someone to follow up with Mr. Miller. Thanks, City Manager. With that, I'll close that public hearing. Mr. Kelly, did you want to respond to any other questions posed? About the?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. I think, specific to the ambassadors, touched on there, the DA pays, the general area assessment pays, goes 65% toward the ambassadors, so it's a little over $600,000 a year. We have continued to hear rave reviews and responses from the ratepayers on the ambassadors and the important services that they provide. And then, specific to the wayfinding system, that's more of a DDA function, but we do believe that the wayfinding system is in need of an update. As you know, we're working through that plan right now. A component of that is looking at a more interactive kiosk that would serve as an information spot for visitors, as well as residents and workers to get information. But as we've seen, those information booths around the country, the cities are generally going away from that model of infrastructure, as it is seen as sort of a dated model and is really expensive to operate.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, with that, I will close this public hearing, and this will be referred back to our committee at the hall. All right, next that will take us to our public hearing to consider the establishment of the 900 West Leonard LLC Neighborhood Enterprise Zone located at 900 Leonard Street Northwest. I do believe we have Mr. Gracia with us tonight to tell us about this item, and then I will see if any of you have questions, and I'll open it up for public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we also have representatives from the development team here, Mr. Hodeman, to provide some comments. So just a quick summary, this is the public hearing for the establishing the neighborhood enterprise zone for the project at 900 Leonard, that is known as Victory on Leonard, that proposes demolish the former YMCA building and construct a new mixed-story four-use building with approximately 119 market-rate residential units. So the project does qualify for a 15-year neighborhood enterprise zone pursuant to City Commission policy, because it meets two of the criteria. One is it's proposing to provide housing type that comprises less than 20% of the existing housing stock in the Census tract, in this case, Census tract 16. And also, the developer will work with the Rapid to Finance and install the installation of a covered bus shelter on the south side of Leonard Northwest adjacent to the property. The project has received support from the West Leonard Business Association, the West Grand Neighborhood Association, and the West Side CIA. And now we'll allow the project team to provide any additional comments about the project and then answer any questions we may have.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hodeman is there, I think.
Great, welcome, Mr. Hodeman. And I see Mr. Balka is here as well, so I'll turn it over to you to add any additional details.
Hi, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Jack here real quick, and Commissioners, good evening. Sorry, I'm on my makeshift desk here this evening. So appreciate the opportunity. What's before you is the district. I think as Mayor Bliss noted, the Brownfield will be coming back before you. There are some tweaks being made to that, and we need to go back to Brownfield Authority before that is before you. But tonight's request is simply for the district. We will be back before you with the actual application for further discussion and consideration. Jeremiah summarized the project well. One thing to note, the current range of rents for the property are ranging in the 70% to 80% range AMI. So that's something Jack and his team took note of to be accommodating to the neighborhood. They felt, you know, that was a better fit for what they're looking to do here. So Jack, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the team and your vision for the project. But again, appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Jeremiah and Jared, thank you so much for your comments, and thank you so much for giving me some time this evening to speak on this project. For five generations now, the Hodemans have lived, worked, and owned businesses in the west side of Grand Rapids. So this project is very special to me. My great-grandfather was a home builder on the west side, built many of the single-family homes that are in that area. My grandfather grew up on Power Street, and so I'm very honored and humbled to be part of this project and to be providing some affordable market rate units to the area that are really so desperately needed. So, you know, as Jeremiah and Jared have pointed out, it's a 120-unit mixed-use building that we're looking to construct here, and we're really excited about it and being able to provide much-needed housing to the area, as well as some retail that can be an asset to the community, as well as to the unit owners, and provide some housing that is affordable to everybody.
Thank you. Let me see if my colleagues have any questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Commissioners, any questions or comments? No? I see my first ward commissioners are shaking their head no. I'm sure you're very familiar with this project. All right, then, with that, we'll turn to anyone who has called in or is in the queue. Mr. Sartre, do we have anyone who wishes to be heard on this item?
There are no callers in the queue.
All right. I'll give it just one more, about 15 seconds, and then we'll see if anyone calls in.
We have one caller in the queue.
All right, thank you.
Caller, you're on the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Good evening. The mothers go back to 1879 on the west side. You mentioned a bus shelter, and it been running $8,000 grand plus 17, up to $10,000 grand, plus 1700 for pad cement pad to hold the bus shelter. The open end of the shelter should be faced to the south, and used that way, you're protecting the wall, and so-called wall, and will be on the north side against the most severe howling winds and also prevailing westerlies. That stop there is the, your Skyjack 7, America's dumbest bus route. Your job to find a dumb route, it's Skyjack, it stores and orbits over downtown Grand Rapids while making stop. I mean, even taxpayers would think, well, why can't you run the, your 700 Monroe or Ottawa and so on, picking up fares for the taxpayers? Extremely dumb. It doesn't land again until cherry, and so I'm advocating to connect up the 700 west side with the 15 east side, which already does at the station, but the station is out of the way. You lose, cost 20 minutes by detouring both the 700 and the 15 into way out of the way, a misnamed central station. So connect up the 700 and the 15 using Monroe, north and south, and then flinging past the arena and to the library. This would give your west side residents direct access to the library, the main library for the first time, Catholic Social Services on Jefferson, as well as state champ, premium state champ, but not only basketball, but also football, Catholic Central. And then the 15, and the west side, your 715 would follow College and Traditional Route out there and left to the Nap's Corner, Meyer. Thank you ever so much, and this is something I would consider litigating, or it's the only way it should really be considered, is it's just dumb, our way, wasting taxpayer money, and you're going to spend another maybe $10,700, $11,000, $1100 bucks on the bus shelter that's Skyjack. Thank you ever so much, what the reporter.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, I'm going to close that public hearing, and that will be referred back to the committee at the hall. All right, that will take us to our final scheduled public hearing tonight. This is in consideration of our fiscal year 2022 service provision fees, and I believe we have our CFO, Ms. Clarin, with us tonight to talk about this, and then we'll open it up for public comment. There you are. Hello, Ms. Clarin.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a quite lengthy item before us tonight because it contains every single one of the 1,188 fees we charge at the city. On the cover memo, you'll see a table that breaks down the fees. If it had, you know, code A in the schedule that's attached to this would indicate there's no recommended change, so majority of our fees are not changing. But then we break down the ones that had a cost of living adjustment, which is around approximately 2% this year, so that's code B. And then code C, I typically get a lot of questions about the fees that are larger than our cost of living adjustments, and just generally in this category, I believe two-thirds of them are directly in the Community Development Department. However, if you look into each of these individual fees, you'll see that most of these are, while they're more than the cost of living adjustment, none of them do achieve full-cost recovery, so they're still being subsidized through other means through our budget. And then we do have 16 new fees this year. This was in the areas of energy, lighting, and communications, the golf course, parking, traffic safety, and building inspections. I believe there were some related to parks and rec and refuse and the treasures. So if you look into the schedule, you'll see a lot of it, like for the Parks and Rec Department, for instance, they're doing virtual classes. So we created a few fees to adapt to our new reality, where we're trying to make the being remote virtually to still get involved, but offer services. And then you'll see category D, these fees are achieving less than full-cost recovery. That's of the 1,188 fees total. So if you're trying to add up that chart, it doesn't total to 100%, just because this is the, we'd be double counting with this category D. So that's generally what's going on with our fees this year. This is our opportunity for public hearing. We'll adopt it next week, and with the budget process, we'll be doing the public hearing for the budget and the property tax next week.
Thank you, Ms. Clarin. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, we do this every year. I know some of us are used to it. I appreciate the pulling out the fees that have changed, so I find that very helpful. All right, with that, we'll open this up, the public hearing up for public comment. Mr. Sartre, do we have anyone in the queue?
Here comes your first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello, my name is Kelly Bates, and I'm the president of Justice for Black Lives. I'm calling in regard to the fiscal year 2022. I'm asking my City Commissioners about no proposal as the review timeline in the length of the budget did not allow for full community participation. We as community members deserve time to review where the city plans to put our tax dollars. Not to mention the fact that we have been demanding the city vote to defund GRPD, yet within the terms of this proposal, the GRPD will be receiving $700,000 more than they did last year. This is completely unacceptable, especially given the fact that they use our money to brutalize black and brown community members, as well as peaceful protesters. Once again, I'm urging you all to vote no, start the process over, and this time with a participatory budgeting by the community. Lastly, defund the GRPD to that mandate 32% of the city's budget and pay for pure violence with the police's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you, caller. And again, just a reminder that this is a public hearing specific to our service fees and the provisions that are being recommended for service fee changes.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. If you could please turn down the volume in the background, please. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello, my name is Charlie. I am from Grand Rapids. I am calling in response to the proposed budget that has been proposed budget for 2022. The timeline of this budget, the people were not.
I'm going to, I'm going to be right there. So once again, this is a, Doug, if you could, Mr. Sartre, if you could let them know that they would need to call in and push five if they want to talk about something that is not the fees, please.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Casey Thompson. I'm the youth director for Justice for Black Lives, and I live on the south of Grand Rapids. I'm going to address the city budget. First is insurance. I believe the police should be personally held liable for their own insurance.
All right, once again, this is a section about fees and not for discussing any other
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Patricia Isaac. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I'm in the northwest side, and I want to fund more of the police officers. I would like to have three more officers, 300.
I think we, I think what we have here is, Doug, if you could just let them know just a minute that we paused, I think what we have in the queue, it talks about the fees that support the budget, and so that may be why people are pushing it when they hear it in the queue.
I let the caller know. There are no more callers for the fee schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Sartre. I do recognize it is a little confusing because we have several items about the budget, but the service fees are pretty specific, a pretty specific section of the budget that we need to hear comments on and take up. So I'm going to close that public hearing, and that'll be referred back to committee of the hall. Commissioners, as you continue to look at the fees, and if you get additional feedback, please feel free to contact Ms. Clarin directly and ask her for any information that you may need. So with that, we'll turn to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. This is our public comment period for any other items, and I will now open up that period of public comment, and I'll turn to Mr. Sartre to see if we have anyone in the queue.
Here comes your first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Jim Arizona. Good evening. Two meetings of that, I don't always turn the volume on. I just speak, or I say my thoughts or write them, but I'm finding out that Mayor Bliss may have been a phone. But I'm finding out that Mayor Bliss may have been offended. Along with Samita Lanier and Melinda Asasi. And we cannot forget Ellie Page. So I'm apologizing if I said something that offended you guys. But the truth is, the same way people are calling in and they're confused about what to speak on and when to speak on it, I really don't know what offended you guys. But I apologize. The other thing I'm requesting is that a hard copy of the agenda be sent to me so that I can review it so I have better insight. I also would like to follow up with the city manager on what is the black bus route? I don't think Mark Washington asking Joel Hunder to contact near anyone is good enough. Why not let us all know? The other thing is I've lived in Chicago, Texas, and I've traveled most of the state. You can go downtown Grand Rapids, which my son and I have done, along with my family to stimulate the city. And we don't really need an information center. The ambassadors are good enough. You get to tier two cities like Denver, you got ambassadors and you have the information center. You can't get lost in downtown Grand Rapids. And there are enough people like the ambassadors that will simply give you directions. This ain't New York. The other thing I'd like to address, which I only have about two more topics here, is it's easy to say you're an activist, you're a civil rights leader, and yet you want to proclaim the name of street. But I think we need to fix them, especially when it has to do with the corridor of Granville Avenue where I was born and raised with 1,000 other Mexicans like me in my family. And with that, I'll say when I was in Denver, it was a jaw dropping experience that Dr. Martin Luther King's family would award two of my children scholarships. And I hope I don't offend anybody. Well, I would like to see Lupe Ramos Montani give a scholarship to a black child in the name of Caesar Chavez, which I don't think is happening. The other thing I'd like to speak on is.
Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you. Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Hello?
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Danny Bennett. Grand Rapids mailing address, Plainfield Township. And I'd like to comment on the defunding police issue. And I guess if there was ever a moment of be careful what you wish for would be with this defunding. It just I know that the city of Grand Rapids's leadership is wonderful people, very smart, diligent people. And I I can't think of any good reason to defund the police. Crime is up. And for the benefit of everybody, please don't consider this defunding. It can only end and end badly. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. If you could please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello, it's me, Ellie Bates calling again. Calling to demand accountability against the officers who brutalized Sam Coleman last week, not even two weeks after the video after video footage surfaced online of the Grand Rapids Police Department brutalizing a black man over littering. We have yet another video of the Grand Rapids Police Department brutalizing yet another black man. This is what our $56.4 million goes towards of our tax money? During a press conference on the day of the Derek Chauvin verdict was announced, our chief of police said, and I quote, "That chokeholds of or any kind of neck restraint have never been a trained tactic within the Grand Rapids Police Department." And that there's also has also long been a duty to intervene by other officers witnessing wrongdoing. So I have to ask, is this their idea of a duty to intervene? What about the neck restraint? This man had not one but two officers with knees in his back, standing him to the ground and suffocating him. It has been made abundantly clear that everyone except those in charge of the officers of the GRPD do not at all respect authority and the city lets them get away with it. All year, people have been complaining about these protests saying, oh, George Floyd didn't happen here or neither did Breonna Taylor. But you know what happened before both of their murders? All of the officers involved had a history of violence against BIPOC. And once again, and I said it said it once again, I said it once, I'm gonna say it again. At the rate the GRPD is at, they're going to kill someone. Mark Washington, Chief Eric Payne and Brandon Davis, you work for us. Do your job and once again, defund GRPD. You can't take our tax money and turn around and brutalize us with the with the equipment that our money paid for. I yield my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Edgington and I am a resident of the city of Grand Rapids, a parent advocate and parent leader for Parents for Healthy Homes. I am here today to say that we appreciate the attention and knowledge on the issue of lead poisoning, but that the city has had over the last several years. But now we want to see the city put some adequate monetary resources and attention to fix the problem. Increasing cases of lead poisoning with children being at home during COVID. There's a I have sent in a New York Times article for reference. I also want to remind the city council that approximately 65 to 70% of the housing stock in GR was built before 1978. The issue has of lead has been in the city, in the state and in the city for the last several years and has been referenced by many commissioners as well as the mayor as being really important. And so we would like to to see some action taken for that. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Casey Thompson. I'm the youth director for Justice for Black Lives and I live on the southeast side. I'm calling first to once again suggest that police carry their own insurance. If police carried their own insurance, it would hold them personally financially accountable for their incidents. It would relieve a ton of taxpayer money and it would build a track record for repeat offending officers outside of filing complaints which are in their own hands. 100% of the cities who have defunded the police and funded the communities saw a decrease in crime. 100% of them. Why are we debating this? Instead of new pipes to reduce the lead, I get an annual an annual letter telling me to boil my water. Chief Payne said GRPD doesn't practice chokeholds, including kneeling on necks. But he did add banning chokeholds as a very necessary part of the eight can't wait strategy. Then GRPD kneeled on Sam Coleman's neck last Sunday. I'm curious how much police brutality GRPD is going to get away with this summer by labeling the incident stolen vehicles. There have been 10 plus cases so far this spring alone where GRPD has pulled someone over, drawn weapons on them, used physical force on them, and even bypassed elderly women's special needs over vehicles that were indeed legal. These are reasons, along with many more, that we need to defund GRPD fast, not slow. I forfeit my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Charlie. I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling today to request that the City Commission vote no on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. The timeline in which this budget was created did not allow for full community participation and was not appropriately transparent, did not allow for people to weigh in and have a say in what the budget gives to the Grand Rapids Police Department especially. The fact that GRPD is receiving $700,000 more than they did last year despite the fact that people have been out protesting for the last year. And GRPD has targeted activists, has injured activists. I've seen my friends, you know, one got their foot broken when a police officer ran over their foot with a bike. And I've seen people be slammed to the ground. This is not acceptable. And we've seen the videos of black people and black men being having two or three police officers hold them down just on suspicion of littering or, you know, they didn't even know. They didn't even have, you know, it's like intelligence does not warrant that. There's supposed to be a process and police as a whole are just incapable of doing that. This process of making this budget needs to be started over with the ability of the community to weigh in and know what the community needs. I'm also calling to request that GRPD be defunded to the mandated 32% of the city's budget and that pay for cure violence comes out of the city, out of the police budget. And that even better that that stuff go towards things that actually benefit the community like public housing, potentially healthcare, potentially making the rapid something that people can expand service and get rides on for free. And just so that would help a lot of other people. That's what the money should be going towards. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Wait, thank you. Scott Atchison again, Grand Rapids resident third ward. I want to tell you a little story that bigger is not always better. Two weeks ago, I had go to Chicago, had a meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning on Michigan Avenue. And this is I've been to Chicago numerous times, taking the train there, drove there. This time I drove there by myself, checked into a hotel right on Walker Avenue, surrounded by tall buildings. What I'm trying to tell you is bigger is not always better. When I'm there the next morning, well, let me go back. And even I took the blue line out to Jefferson Park exit, like going on going up to O'Hare. And I visited two ex Grand Rapids residents who used to live here, but now they're teachers in the Chicago public school system. But it got me thinking, bigger is not always better. My idea of an information center at the main downtown intersection would not work in Chicago because you would need 15 of them and then the expense could be outrageous. But my point is Grand Rapids is like the perfect sized city, like a tennis ball. Chicago's like a basketball and nothing is bigger than a basketball. We're like a tennis ball. Downtown Grand Rapids is walkable. We should have an information center at the main downtown intersection that will let everybody know what is open in downtown Grand Rapids. Become information city. And I wish Tim Kelly was still here. He dropped off at the meeting. But with that $12,860,000 in pet projects through the GR board, there's plenty of money in there to run an information center. But it should be the convention and visitors bureau. I have a letter from the Grand Rapids City Commission, signed by all the commissioners and the mayor before any of you were there that said the convention and visitor bureau should be coming to you to do this. But they're not. They're not knocking on your door because, I don't know, blame it on COVID or something. But, you know, that's all I'm going to say. Bigger is not always better. Grand Rapids is the ideal sized downtown that an information center would work perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. If you could please lower the volume on your device.
Okay, my name is Suber Baker. I am a resident of the Grand Rapids Township and I work in the city of Grand Rapids. My call is to really, really ask people have they thought through the process of defunding. Here were city manager Washington stated on May 6th that during the town hall meeting, defunding the Grand Rapids Police Budget would mean the loss of 50 officers. That's 50 less officers in a city with a population of nearly 200,000 citizens. That is dangerous and deadly. And defund GRPD, the group, I don't think they understand. If you cut 600 million, that doesn't mean that their choice projects are going to get that money. There are a lot of other projects out there where that money will go. But they will not make our city safe. To defund our Grand Rapids Police Department would be a huge mistake and would be extremely deadly for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Patricia Sizik. I live in the northwest side of Grand Rapids. And we do not want to defund the police. We need more police officers out here. It is not safe here. I can't even go safely for a walk. And these people that are complaining are terrorists and they need to be stopped. They have worked to destroy our city and have made it to where a point where it is we are scared to go out. It's hard to go shopping because we have been confronted by these people and it's got to stop. We have more projects coming up than we need. We need to cut down on some of these buildings because we do not have the police or law enforcement to protect us. Please do not defund the police department in any way. I would like to have 300 more officers so that we will have a safe place to live and to be able to be out and enjoy the city the way we should. Please do not defund the police department in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Tasha Garrett and I am a resident of Grand Rapids. I am a parent advocate with Parents for Healthy Homes. And I spoke last month at the city council to express our desire that the council act in the next budget cycle to allocate money for rental home lead inspections and clearances. And we will continue to advocate for funding until the 100% preventable issue of lead poisoning is no longer a topic that we're talking about. In 1997, my son was lead poisoned. I had the support from the Traveling Grandparents Program, Spectrum Hospital and the Kent County Department to ensure that my home and son were both cared for and lead hazards in my home were no longer present. There were resources that were connected and available. And if we could do this in 1997, we can do this again in 2021. I appreciate the value of the care that was given to my son's life in 1997. I only ask to give the same value to the children today. I am not asking you to do something that you as a city hasn't already done. We don't want to see any more children lead poisoned. And I'm sure you don't want that either. So let's work together to pass proactive policies and provide the necessary financial resources to make this 100% excuse me, to make this 100% preventable problem not be a problem anymore in Grand Rapids. And we know the issue of lead poisoning is important to you because we received a neighborhood match fund for our event, Healthy Housing Healthy Kids Drive Up Fair that we're holding on June 5th. And we are bringing lead awareness to the community during that event because we understand that there are more children at risk to lead exposure in their homes now during COVID-19 than there have ever been before. So I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, caller. Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello, my name is Johnny Brown, uh, business owner in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm calling about the discussion on defunding the Grand Rapids Police. I don't think the ramifications are understood at all. If you wanted to fund, know the other side of it. We have a city of over 200,000 people and they need to be serviced too. So just to defund for your cause, for your area is so wrong and so, it's just so, I don't even know the word, but it's really makes our city, we're really going in the wrong direction. We really are. 38 homicides last year, um, the city itself is not as safe. The perception is out there and I plead with you. I just wish you'd take me serious. I mean, we are getting to be known as a not a safe city. I know a lot of people from out of town, people that went downtown, don't even like going downtown. I mean, this is serious. This is serious for the betterment of our city. We have got to have enough police officers out on the roads patrolling and they do a great job. A bad police officer, yes, they should be fired, they should be dealt with, no denying that, and I don't disagree. As far as the good police, and there's a lot of them, I'll say great police, that serve every single day, risk their lives, I mean, all this, all the things that have been said about them, but now it seems like the narrative on our police is police hate. Well, if that one girl that calls in and talks about the police and this should happen and this was happening, protests and, I don't know, these people walking down the middle of the street one night and they wouldn't get off the street. I mean, they were asked, 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 so what do you want the police to do? Just have this, will the police, uh, street shut down? I don't think so. So did you want to get arrested to make a point? All I know is that our city is in trouble and I also don't want to be racially profiled myself. I am not a racist, I've been told that. I love the black community. We try to help them. We're doing more for the downtown, uh, the inner city, the Voice for the Badge than the city is. I mean, I'm working, I'd be happy to sit down with somebody from the city. We're doing some great things for the inner city and they're going to show because we care about the inner city, but we also care about our police. And they're being demonized, people that go on risk their lives every single day and there's been killings, somebody was, cop was murdered in Los Angeles yesterday and in California. I mean, it just keeps happening. Ambushes, you know, the riots, we're talking about the riots, getting mistreated. Well, how about the police getting spit at, rocks thrown at them and water, frozen water bowls? I mean, how about the police? There's a lot of injuries there. There's a lot of psychological injuries too, because you go through all that, you have somebody in your face saying that, I'm, we're going to go to your house and find your spouse and we're going to do this and that to them. I mean, come on, we're trying to build unity. We need police. If we don't have them, this will be an uncivilized city.
That's three minutes caller. Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Mark and I'm with Grand Rapids. I'm just going to say something brief, brief on the, on the subject of the police. Those people who want to say they want to hire more police officers, be careful what you wish for. If they do that in St. Louis, crime has skyrocketed. More police officers are not going to deter crime. It's going to be up to the residents to deter crime. Now, for what I'm, what I'm, now, now to get back to what I really want to talk about. The crumbling overpass of wealthy at 131. That thing is getting worse, not, not better. And if, and if, and if something is not done, it's going to be a catastrophe. You have to fix it. It's too tight, it's too narrow, the concrete is crumbling by the second. You know, nowhere, you know, I'm not driving, I'm not driving over that thing. There's, it's no time, I might, I might fall in, crash your semi or something. Something has to be done. You know, get with the state, build a traffic circle, build with them odd diamonds that they, that, that, that they came up with, something, anything, you know, safety is paramount there and it has to be done. You know, people's lives are at stake and if, if not, if something is not done, there might be some lawsuits coming and it won't be pretty. Thank you very much.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? In the background? Awesome, thank you. You're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Postman, uh, Plainfield Township. I called in a couple of weeks ago about the defunding and my impression is, is that you spend a lot of time listening to these people that have complaints about the police. However, um, the people that are having issues with the police are the ones that are committing crimes. Um, people need to stop resisting and listen and follow the law and there won't be those issues. Um, everybody wants to hate on the cops, but, um, I talked to you guys about doing ride alongs a couple of weeks ago. Uh, to my knowledge, not one of you has, uh, taken me up on that or keep paying on that and that just goes to show that you refuse to educate yourselves about what police officers deal with on a daily basis. We just had three more officers killed. Our officers put their lives on the line day in and day out to protect this city. And all you guys consistently listen to is a small minority of the city residents who have issues and most of those people have issues because they're committing crimes, not because they're law bodies, citizens, um, just like the video that was released recently. The, one of those suspects went into the officer's gun. They were going three deep with four illegal handguns in the vehicle and it's the cops' fault? The cops did something wrong? No, they're out committing felonies. Let's take a step back, stop armchair quarterbacking and actually look at what precipitated the police involvement. The police wouldn't be involved if they weren't committing crimes. So I'm asking you guys to keep funding our police department and back them up because, like I said my, before, my daughters, they're wearing my badge now. Their morale is so low, they are so disrespected and it needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your, your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Abigail Bartlett. I work in the city of Grand Rapids, um, with Healthy Homes Coalition as a community organizer, um, with Parents for Healthy Homes. Um, and I just wanted to echo the sentiment shared by, um, my also fellow activists in the community around healthy housing, Tasha and Sarah who spoke earlier in support of increased funding for the fiscal year budget 2022, um, for funding towards proactive, uh, policies that support lead remediation, work and inspection clearances. Um, we're excited. We do know that there was, in the current budget plans, there is an increased funding that is allocated for additional community development, or is it additional community development, department staffing support. Um, if possible, providing more clarity on what that means, um, I think would be really great. Um, does that mean that the city is moving towards a rental inspection program? Um, whether it's a pilot program towards an ordinance or, um, would love to hear more on that. Um, we have been continuing, uh, raise the standards campaign, knowing that we need to raise the standards of rental, um, clearance or rental home clearances within the city to require these lead clearance certifications so that children aren't being the lead detectors within homes, but that we're actually detecting for lead before families move in. Um, and so we are excited to be working with the city to move that forward and I hope that that continues to be a top priority, um, not only in words, but also in financial commitment. Um, thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Melissa Poplis. I'm a citizen of Grand Rapids and also a proud member of Voice for the Badge. Uh, I apologize, public speaking is not one of my strengths, uh, but I'm tired of being silent. Um, I'm sick of what's happening within our community. It terrifies me when I hear phrases like defund the GRPD. I mean, for the most part, I feel pretty safe while out and about in our city, but that safety is dependent on the amazing men and women that protect and serve our community. That's the Grand Rapids Police Department. You know, our men and women that proudly wear that badge, they're human. They are mothers, they're fathers, wives, husbands, children, grandchildren. They choose this honorable profession because they truly care. You know, they want to make a difference. Obviously, they don't, I think, choose to be an officer because of the money. Uh, at the end of the day, they just hope and pray to go home to their loved ones. And I mean, defunding, it's just, please, absolutely not. We're already short on officers. We had a record number of homicides just last year. And I'm sorry, but the idea of sending in civilians to do police work is, is mind boggling. I keep reading about hundreds and thousands of dollars we're spending on companies to supposedly analyze our police department, but I guess I challenge you, when was the last time that, you know, y'all went on a ride along or just reach out and have a conversation with one of our officers? I'm just hoping for a city where we can show support for those. I mean, these, these folks run towards danger when I sure as heck would run away. Um, I love our GRPD, I call me selfish, but I like feeling safe while out and about and, uh, going to great cities in Grand Rapids and I thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Me llamo Alstonachi. Tengo pregunta. Por qué no hay un centro de informaciones en esta ciudad? Es malo.
Hi, my name is Carlos Martinez. I have questions. Why is there not a center for information? I want answers.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
How you doing? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay in the city of Grand Rapids. Uh, I'm not the one for saying defund, but I know, uh, if I'm to be realistic, it sounds that a lot of community members want, um, the Grand Rapids Police Department to fund it. Um, more of one of the people that I would say to reimage the police department, I don't think, uh, this, uh, funding from this budget will be, um, used to reduce, uh, the police department's budget. It's for the simple fact that I understand that cure violence, uh, is not here just to, uh, stop, uh, people from getting killed, but I understand that at least 38 or 39 people were killed last year, but there were hundreds of shooters and majority of those shooters happened on the north side of, uh, Grand Rapids instead of the south side. And so, uh, I definitely support cure violence. I believe that that would help reduce the hundreds of shootings that happened in the city of Grand Rapids. A lot of, uh, people aren't dying, but a lot of shootings are occurring. I do believe that, I believe, I, I did sit through another meeting and heard that the city manager said that after this budget process is over, that there will be some additional funding that, uh, can potentially go to community projects. So I do ask that, that additional funding, if there, if I heard that correctly, that that funding goes to community projects and then the next budget, if the police department still have these complaints, that I don't believe that funding will be reduced from this budget this year around, but if, uh, the next year's budget or that process comes around and the police department is continuously getting these complaints, I do believe that city management or whoever is in power at the city commission, do you guys really need to look at reimagining and actually taking money from the budget regardless of how the police department do what's best for the people and re, and reinvest that money back into the community? Uh, you, my time, I appreciate it.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. If you could please, uh, turn down the volume in the background. Uh, if you could please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Alvin Chi, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Ya te, se, Alvin Chi, wia. Le, Grand Rapids, um, eda nasha. Shema dosi, eh, shiri, da oliver chulia. Lu kan, kele, eh, nasha. Sanja keni, um, sanja keni, shen, do, tori, tori, chini, bashachin. Agua da, eh, denan shlo. I'd like to thank the commission today for taking, um, my call, uh, to speak to you all. I am Alvin Chi. I'm an indigenous gay man, um, was pretty new to Grand Rapids, been calling this home for two years now. Um, and just, excuse me, and just hearing, um, what people have been saying on our, the call today, you know, it, it concerns me a little bit that I'm living in the same city as some of these folks here who are calling in. Um, I'm more afraid to be out and about and seeing the GRPD, uh, show up. Um, I don't think they'd be the first people I'd call for help in, uh, a dire situation. I believe that the money that could be saved could go towards other programs that I feel like the city needs and could better, um, utilize from. Social services, safety nets, housing, there's so much going on here in like this political climate that I don't think the people who see individuals marching down the street actually take the time to learn what the issues are, um, and why they're doing it. I feel that, um, even folks who are quote unquote left of, the leftist party here, don't take the time to actually listen to what the real concerns are. There's a lot we can do together if we try, you know, and a lot of the conversations leave out what could be done with that saved money. And if we are to better ourselves as a society, I think we have to listen and try new avenues of, um, trying to live with one another. If bringing on more cops worked, that hasn't worked in hundreds of years now. Never worked. What we need to do is start thinking, as some folks have already said here, we can bring down that crime rate, we can do, but we have to be neighbors. And I don't think right now the conversation is headed, is actually listening to the people.
Caller, that's three minutes.
Thanks so much.
Caller, can you turn on the volume in the background? Awesome. You are on with, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Yes, thank you. My name is Adam Sherman. I live in Grand Rapids, in the city's third ward, and I'm calling today to, uh, ask that the commission, uh, not to pass this proposed budget for the fiscal year of, of 2022. Uh, that's going to be, uh, not only, uh, not taking money out of the police budget, but actually giving the, the police department $700,000 more than they received last year. And there's no reason we should be giving the police department even more money when they have spent, the, the police department, the leadership of the police department and this city commission, for the most part, has been completely deaf to the, the, the calls from the people. We have had, uh, citizens, myself included, marching in the streets, telling you exactly what we want, which is to defund the GRPD. Because in the last year, the GRPD has not saved us, they've not come to the side of the community. In fact, they spent that year targeting black activists. They've spent the past year disproportionately harassing black motorists and black citizens. And I think it's time that we start taking money from that police department, department budget and putting it back into the community, back into, uh, things like, uh, mental health services, counseling services, health services for the community. Money that could be going towards the cure the violence program could be taken out of that $700,000 that more that's going to the police budget. We could be paying for the cure the violence program out of that money. There's so- There's so many more things that we could be doing to help the people in this community than buying more military type hardware for the police department, buying more ShotSpotter technology that we have shown is not tested to be accurate. We don't, we don't need more police. And we don't need more heavily armed police. We need to be reinvesting in our community. We need to be putting that money back into social services that help the people of the community and not target the people of the community and not harass the people of the community. We don't need helicopters flying around the southeast side. We don't need escalated force from the police department. We need community. And so I'm asking you once again, as many of us have asked you.
That's three minutes, caller. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Watchdog back seven-nine on your agenda as well as Chicago, which we heard brought up earlier. The, although my dad's people landed here in Grand Rapids in 1879. He personally was Catholic Central JCUM. First job out of Van Arbor or in Chicago as an electrical engineer for the Chicago Elevator Lines. All of that. If you've been over there, you know that the elevated is maybe seven blocks long, north, south, and about five blocks east, west. Talking Wells, Van Buren, Wild Dash, and it makes the seven different elevated lines routes from whatever neighborhood, it doesn't make any difference whether you're black, brown, or even white as an Albany Park. They circle the elevator, so it's elevated loop, which saves some $2.4 billion. I have a photo of the Chrysler Building over in New York. Looking down on 1930's photos, I see four massive elevated stations in north, south, lines crossing Manhattan. They all went down, but I helped say, but in any case, Chicago is much better served. You get to go downtown on the elevated line, also the Dearborn subway, talking the Congress 290 Eisenhower Expressway, Dearborn, north, south, out Lake Milwaukee, goes to a hair neighborhoods northwest and largely Hispanic neighborhoods, some Italian neighborhoods going on two west routes. So it's got way better off than what we have here. And if you notice, he never has once ever cared, you've heard him come before you dozens of times. He doesn't think we belong, we bus riders belong. It's always the better information center, which, you know, after we don't need, the hotel people don't need it. If they did need it, you know, you generally have the landscape, the information center would be there. I'm not criticizing, well, you know, just kind of step over a line saying Chicago is totally false. Please go over there and investigate. On seven-nine, the mayor's pet terrorists, we see the Trumps, the failed Trumpsters on January 6th. Many of them are in jail here in Michigan. They were total failures in terms of influence and policy, but she did influence policy. That's why I'm going through all this Spanish second language here. She totally succeeded in her terrorist tactic. She's Mexican.
Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Amy Kepner.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Tammy Smoker. I'm a daughter of two little girls. And tell you what, it terrifies me to defund our police. Terrifies me. Let's look at, let's just look at facts. Let's just look at facts. Look at the city of Los Angeles, who defunded the police and now they're going to fund the police. Because what happened was terrible, terrible things. We need our police. We need them. It's not a debate. We need our police. We need to fund them. We need to back them. I ask that you, as parents, as citizens, and just as humans, stop with looking at so much of the other things and just please look at the facts for our children, for ourselves, for our businesses. Don't, don't, don't let them go. Don't let this up. We need to, we need to fund our police. We need to, we need to back them. In the past, in the past year, look at Los Angeles, eightfold rise in shootings. Eightfold rise in shootings. Fifty-nine in the first two weeks of 2021 compared to seven at the same time of last year. Let's not be the city that's going to be heard as being the city. Let's be the city that's going to rise up and be better. Fund her, please. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, this is Sandy Brand. I own a business in Grand Rapids. And I am very, very upset over the defunding of the police. Number one, I get it. Not all cops are good. But for them to be categorized as all cops are bad truly makes me sick. I can't imagine being a white officer and praying every day that he walks back in the doors to see my kids. I have children. I have grandchildren. They have all been taught, when you get pulled over, do what you're told. Simple as that. When you don't do what you're told, you get in trouble. And when they sat and started burning buildings down in our town, and trust me, I've seen it before. I grew up in Birmingham, Alabama. That's not how you solve it. And I truly believe it has ruined this city. You want to fund the police? Maybe we should defund other people such as commissioners. Let them give some of the money to the police. You look at these cities that have defunded their police, now they're begging them to come back. And I would not want to be a cop in this town because they're not respected by you. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Can you turn on the volume in the background, please, caller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you. Go ahead. Yep, your three minutes starts now.
Pamela Urbansky. I do not live in the city. But I've done real estate in the city. To defund the police department is a bad mistake. These officers go out there and risk their lives every day. Every day. They leave their house. They leave their family. You need to have appreciation about it. It's not about black, white, Asian, whatever. You need to appreciate those officers that are protecting you. Because guess what? When you get in trouble, who do you call? You call them. You call them. Just remember that. And I'm tired of everybody, everybody's life matters. Everybody's life. Just keep that in mind and count on your blessings. And pray for these officers that go out there and protect us. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hey, my name's Karen Black. I live in Allendale, Michigan. I'm calling to say that the city of Grand Rapids should not talk about defunding GRPD. They need to give more funding to the officers that keep the city safe. And I mean, not just the people that live there, but the businesses, the people that have businesses there and the people that they want to bring into Grand Rapids for tourist reasons. Because without our police officers and the number of officers that we need, it would not be a safe city. I would not bring my family there. I would not tell my friends to go there because lack of security due to lack of money going into our police department. And that would not look good, I feel, for the city of Grand Rapids anyway whatsoever. And our men and women working in the streets, they do deserve the money, more money, to keep everybody that lives there and the people that have businesses there, people that go work there, safe because the job they do is very dangerous. They deserve your recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no more calls in the queue.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that. All right, I will turn to my colleagues around this table and I'll start tonight with Commissioner. Hi, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you for all the callers that have called in tonight. I appreciate all the work that is being done on the budget for the city of Grand Rapids. And at this point in time, I would like to thank the city manager and yourself for all the work that you do and my colleagues as well. Have a great evening and a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for the calls tonight and thanks for all the work by city staff. I think this month, I'm just thinking about everyone's mental, mental health and the fact that this month is mental health awareness. I think more than ever, we see individuals who are really struggling to understand kind of what's going on in this world, whether it's stuff in their own personal lives, feeling like it's very overwhelming, maybe financially, you know, mentally and their health. And just remind you that there is an event this week, which would be nice to stomp out the stigma walk and really to eliminate that stigma that exists with mental health. You know, listening to these calls, it's really interesting because, you know, I don't know if it is, do we need to share more about the conversations that we're having? Things were laid out pretty much last week. It's, it's hard to listen to some of these calls and to realize that we're really at an impasse in terms of philosophy. We're in a terms of, you know, what do we think makes us all safe in this community? And so, you know, I think, for me, I think about somebody who called me a few weeks ago and told me that their six-year-old daughter was beside herself after watching a neighbor get pulled over, stopped by police in our community. Nine, nine officers were there, nine cars. And she's, you know, her sentiment was, I have this like traumatized child now who experiences in their community. And I want to, I want to feel safe. I want to be in a community and that looks at what are all the investments that can go into making us safe. And I can't help but think about myself at six years old. Because I too watched somebody in my family get taken away by the police. And it was something that sticks with me and it's still very traumatic. And so I, I sit here really struggling with, how do we move forward? I think, you know, city manager, you laid out the budget, laid out what are the realities about the step increases and the other pieces. And so I think we're just at the point where it's like a philosophical point of view. And so I, I think that at this point, I hope that people kind of listen to our commission meetings, hear the questions that we're asking and think about kind of where they're maybe spending their time and the energy on sort of the commentary moving forward. Because there were some things I heard tonight that were very triggering, felt actually pretty racist. And to sit here and so sometimes not to be able to say anything in that moment is one of the worst feelings in the world. And, you know, I, I really feel like all of us around this table, there might be different ways that we have tactics about how we want to get this done. But I want to say that I appreciate all of you and I think that this budget process is one that hopefully we'll be able to move forward over the next week. We'll be able to have further conversations and, you know, hopefully pass a budget that we can continue working to live out our values, primarily around racial equity, primarily around governmental excellence, and really trying to make this community safe for everyone and not just fall into one myth of what safety means for everyone. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Connor? All right, Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to those of you who called in to provide public comment this evening on any topic as well as those public hearings that we had. I, I, city manager, I don't see you on, I don't have my budget details in front of me. But I think it would be great to share the schedule again because I know during some of those discussions, we are providing opportunity for public comment to be given. And it would be great just to kind of share that schedule if we could. So whoever has that, you know, if we could share that with the public, I think that would be helpful. And understanding that some of those meetings are held during the day, so people may not have the capacity to attend. But there will be also a public hearing on the budget itself coming up as well. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of the many opportunities that do exist during this budget discussion to be able to weigh in. I think we, you know, we have a budget now that, I think, Mayor, you may have said it earlier today that, you know, was looking much more bleak than it is now as we were looking at a lot of the funding that had been lost. And I think we do have opportunity to, with the ARPA dollars, to be able to have more community engagement as we're going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll, we'll make sure that that is posted. And I know last week at the Budget Town Hall, we also, we also talked about that. Commissioner Rapper?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I too just want to say thanks to the people who called in and, and really were sticking with us for these long meetings, paying, paying attention online, sending emails, asking questions. It's a lot of work to, to stay in touch with everything that's happening. And so for those who are leaning in and engaging, we are appreciative of that. And I, and I, and I end a night, a day like this, where we were in meetings together for ten-plus hours with a lot of gratitude for, for each of you and the work that you do and the staff for all the work that they do to, to set up those meetings. So feeling, feeling grateful for, for you all as my colleagues tonight.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to, to all who took the time this morning, this evening rather, to, to call in. And even for those who did not call in, just want to say thank you for your presence as you took part in the meeting. I want to really take a moment to just lift up city staff for the work that has been done and continues to be done. We, you know, the part of the budget process that I appreciate, the workshops, is that we're reminded of that which has been done. And I, I think that there's a significant amount of work, a lot of things that we can point to in terms of progress, you know, during a time that was pretty much the lowest point of our community in, in the world due to the pandemic. And there's a lot that, again, we're reminded of, whether it's the, the work that we're doing around the environment, the work around vital streets, the opportunities we have before us with dollars coming for housing, as well as the opportunities before us with, with the COVID relief, economic recovery. And so I think that, you know, we're, we're in this, this space that, you know, again, none of us has ever experienced. And so it's kind of difficult to think about, how do we? Usually you can fall back on lived experience, but none of us have ever lived through this. And so I just think that in spite of everything that's happening, And so I just think that in spite of everything that's happening, we continue to find a way to try to move forward and, and, and progress. And I think that city staff has done just a yeoman's job. A lot of folks that who aren't, perhaps their names aren't mentioned, and we don't know, we don't see their faces, but we know that they're getting it done behind the scenes. And so I just want to really again recognize and lift up city staff. And also want to, you know, again, with regards to all of those who continue to call in around the issue of policing, I think we have to keep that top of mind that a lot of us are speaking based on lived experience, whether, whether it's individuals who are in favor of, 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 of defunding the police or those who are opposed to it. It is primarily based on lived experience. And I think that with that in mind, it's always an opportunity for, for, I think for all to engage in the, in the activity of empathy. Because if all you know is what you know, it's kind of hard, I think, to sometimes see things from another's, another's perspective. And so this is, I think, a debate that will continue. And yet I think we have to give thought to what it means to be a resident in Grand Rapids based on where you live, based on the color of your skin, based on your socioeconomic status and such. And so I think that I'm, I'm, again, I'm always open and welcoming the, the tension that comes with it. And I just believe that I'm, 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 I'm committed to believing that we can and we can get to a better place, but it's going to take a significant work, a significant lift. And I just think that we have to, it begins with committing to a better sense of empathy. So thank you Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner. I'll turn to our appointed officials, city clerk.
Thank you. It was a fun day moving back and forth between city commission and, and hosting a conference. Everything is going great. Thank you Mayor yesterday for coming and giving an opening speech in the opening session. It was very well received. It's, it's kind of interesting to see packs of people moving around downtown with lanyards on at a conference. And so this is our first conference and everybody's doing great, the convention bureau and everybody. So we have about just under 500 clerks from around the country that are here in Grand Rapids for, for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So thanks for the city and, and Mayor for your leadership on bringing that conference here five years ago when we got pitched for that. So I'm very excited. So hopefully other conferences and conventions can see how we can do this in a, in a safe manner and using the facilities that we have. We did get a, a resolution from Grand Rapids Public Schools to have, they're going to have a special election on August 3. It'll be the only thing on, on the ballot for a non-homestead renewal. So it'll be for, for second properties or on taxes that are on non-homesteaded property. So absentee ballots and that will be going out the next, next month or so. So be watching for that, but that's what that election will be. That's it for me.
Thank you city clerk. And I'll, I'll say again, thank you for your work and the entire host committee and helping make this conference a success. So I know a lot of work went into it. With that, let's go to our city attorney, Ms. Sicherek.
Just have a good evening.
All right, thank you. City manager.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Good, good. Yeah, I want to thank the staff for the work that they've done to get to this point. I'm getting a little echo. Appreciate all the work that's been done, a lot, lot of work behind the scenes as, as I've heard earlier. And I want you to know how grateful I am for that. And thank you commissioners for your patience and deliberating and, and, you know, this is, this is, it's not meant to be easy. These are hard decisions. And at this point, it is, just to be clear of the budget process, it is the governing body's decision at this point. The manager has proposed a budget. We've done our best analysis and it is up to the elected governing body of this commission to determine whether or not they will support it or amend it or whatever other direction you provide moving forward. And so I look forward to one more week of deliberation. I heard the, the request for the discussion. So next week, we have the committee of the whole presentation on the 18th Tuesday morning. We'll come back and see what other questions remain. And next, on the 18th at night at 7:00 PM is the official public hearing. That is, that is the one required meeting that's specified for public comment. Now, what we've done in this process, we've ensured every day that we've briefed the commission on the budget and it's been at least once a week and sometimes twice that we've had opportunity either at the hearing or that evening to receive comment. And that, that was in the press release that was mentioned at the town hall. And so the, the next opportunity will be on the 18th and then the commission will vote on the 20th if there is any remaining discussion before, before the vote. I do want to also suggest to Mr. Hunderup that you're, all of your colleagues around the world now watch how we conduct city commission meetings. I'm sure all the clerks recess from the meeting to go back and tune in tonight. And so I'll be interested in their opinion. You'll hear it all around the conference tomorrow. But appreciate the public for calling in and look forward to continuing the conversation next week.
Thank you city manager. And I'll just end with thanking you and the entire team who worked really hard to bring port a lot of the budget presentations that have been incredibly detailed and informative. And, and for those of you who were not able to join us last week for the, the town hall, you know, a couple of things that, that I shared at that time is that, you know, the, the budget process, even though the formal budget is presented by the city manager and we then participate in deliberation before adoption, the budget process is, is often months and months long. And, and we gave a full list of the number of performance updates that we've received, the day-long retreat that we had last year where we prioritized what was important to us collectively. And again, it's consensus. You know, it's, and I said this last week during the budget town hall, you know, this budget is a, is a consensus budget. It doesn't have everything in it that I want or you want. I mean, this is the seven of us, just like we did last October prioritizing. And if you, I really encourage people to read the manager's transmittal letter. I think it's very well done. In fact, having sat around this table for as many years as I have, I think it's one of the best manager letters that I've read that truly captures the work that went into and the information that the manager took from all of us and our processes over this last year that informed him as the budget was created. So for individuals who haven't read that yet, I encourage them to do it. It's about 50 pages. It's very comprehensive. A lot of that, you know, was laid out today as we talked about the investment we're making into housing and supporting individuals who are experiencing homelessness and investments into neighborhoods and environmental sustainability. Commissioner Jones touched on that. And the other thing I'm encouraging people to do is to go back if they have a chance and they can't join us during the day, to go back and watch those budget sessions, especially if it's a topic that you really care about, go back and, and get more detail on those sections of the budget. We'll continue to do what we can to put information out there. One thing we talked about last week at the, at the town hall is, you know, how can we continue to do better at getting good information out there and communicating? And David Green was with us during the town hall and committed to continuing to improve in that area as well. So again, thank you to everyone for your continued hard work and service as we work through this. And, and as I believe Commissioner Lanier said, or one of you said, you know, this is, as I said earlier, we have two processes before us because of the ARPA funds. So, you know, we're legally mandated to pass a balanced budget and then the unallocated funds, we will as a body, talk about how those dollars are allocated over the next couple of months. But it's a huge opportunity to continue to invest in our community in really meaningful ways. So with that, thank you all again. I know it's been a long day. Appreciate your dedication and service and I hope you have a good night.